One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Starting off with Citizen Concerns Round One, anything to be heard? Moving on to the approval of the agenda, I'll move it. Motion by Radic, second by DeWitt, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items three through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three, approval of the minutes of the September tenth, 2019 meeting. Item four, approval of claims. Item five, from the county auditor, receive auditor's quarterly report. Item six, A, from Human Resources, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B, authorization to initiate hiring process. And C, approval to provide flu shots to Woodbury County employees. Item seven, from Secondary Roads, approval of permits to work in the right-of-way for Charles Whitman. The attorney of office abstains, right?
Yes.
Approval of the consent agenda?
I'll second that. So, motion by DeWitt, second by Radic, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero. Moving on to the regular agenda, item eight, canvassing the Sergeant Bluff-Luton special election.
Hello, Steve Hofmeyer with the Auditor Elections Office. Got the canvas of the special election held by Sergeant Bluff-Luton for their bond issue. Did not pass, so I just need you guys to sign off on this.
Is this a receive, is that what this one is?
Yes.
I'll move to receive the canvas.
Second.
Motion by Radic, second by Taylor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item ten, from Soil and Water Conservation District, Ben Hoakler?
Hoakler, yep.
Hoakler, okay, all right, update on watershed conditions?
Yeah. So, I had a presentation that I sent. I got a PowerPoint behind you if you care to look, but like I said, my name's Ben Hoakler, I'm with the Soil and Water Conservation District. Thank you. I'm just here today to kind of, uh, report on the Little Sioux watershed conservation project and the watershed structures that, um, are involved with that. I think in the past, we've invited the Board of Supervisors on a county tour to come out and look at some of these sites. Not really sure when the last one was, but we thought this would be a little more convenient today, so. I realize many of you might not know exactly what... Might not know exactly what these watershed structures are when I talk about them, so I'm going to explain it briefly. These are basically dams built in certain areas to basically provide flood control and prevent soil erosion and soil loss. They're created by compacted dirt, usually have a metal or concrete pipe that controls the water, kind of releases it gradually. These structures were designed, like I said, to control flooding, prevent erosion, and improve water quality. It also provides wildlife habitat and recreation. And these were built through the Little Sioux Flood Prevention Project, which, uh, the County Board of Supervisors are sponsors with. And that's... That construction began in the late nineteen forties and involves several counties in northwest Iowa. Because Woodbury County is kind of at the bottom of this watershed, we have the most dams. About four hundred and eighty of these watershed structures were built to this day. And I'm just going to kind of show you a couple of examples here. This one, um, this is located in the Glen Ellen watershed, which is right outside of Sergeant Bluff. As you can see in the middle there, that's the cement, uh, riser that controls the water level. And right behind that is the berm that actually holds the water back. Now, this is kind of a unique dam. It's considered a high-hazard dam because directly behind that berm and downstream is a housing development. So, we designate that as a high-hazard dam because should this fail, there could be significant property damage. And there's actually eleven of these high-hazard structures located throughout Woodbury County. Five of them are located in the Bacon Creek watershed in city limits here of Sioux City. Two of them in the Glen Ellen, and four of them are located north of Smithland in the Smoky Hollow watershed, and those provide flood protection for the town of Smithland. So, that's just kind of one example right there. The next one, I kind of took a picture of, uh, another one you might see. This one obviously includes a county road. Uh, there's plenty of these around also that I call them county road structures. This one, the dam, or the road itself accesses the dam, and as you can see, it's holding back the water on the right side of that picture. And there's also the cement riser directing water underneath the road through cement culverts, so there's quite a few of those out in our county, too, uh, kind of protecting the gravel roads and the county roads. The Secondary Roads Department is, um, pretty good at maintaining and keeping these in working order, so just aware of that. That's kind of another example there. And I like to give this, show these pictures. This is kind of a before and after, uh, picture comparing before and after those Little Sioux structures were, um, installed. The one on the left is taken in about nineteen fifty-six. You can kind of see the gully that's formed over years and years of water rushing through there. The bridge in that picture had been expanded and lengthened, I think, a couple times just to account for the widening and of that, of that gully. The picture on the right, however, is after one of these watershed structures was installed. They eliminated the bridge and used the concrete culvert. That kind of eliminated the expense of maintaining that bridge and also stabilized the ground around it. And so, that's located just west of Smithland on, uh, Old One Forty-One there. So, what is the Board of Supervisor's role? The Board has been involved with this as co-sponsors of the Little Sioux Flood Prevention Project, along with the Woodbury County Soil and Water Conservation District, uh, since this began. The Board of Supervisors were very involved at the beginning, um, providing easements and right-aways and actually preparing and installing some of these improvements when these were being constructed. Nowadays, there's not a lot of construction going on. So, their biggest support we received from the county is the funding of the watershed technician position, which is responsible for inspecting and maintaining these structures throughout the county. And there's also county-district agreements that were signed, which kind of lay out the responsibilities each party agreed to. You can kind of read some of those there. Like I said, the benefits of these structures, I've already kind of mentioned, they control flooding for various areas and towns, prevent soil erosion, improve water quality, provides wildlife habitat. And we actually got a report lately, a while back, from the National Watershed Benefits Model. They kind of compute the benefits that these, uh, provide during rainstorm events. And so, for, for example, on August twentieth, back in two thousand eighteen, an average of three inches of rain fell throughout Woodbury County, and that model calculated six hundred thousand dollars' worth of benefits, uh, due to these structures installed. And if you think about how much, how often we get a three-inch rain, I mean, we had one last week, so, I mean, that's compounded year after year, that's, um, these pay for themselves, basically, and they're very valuable to our, to our county. So, now I'm just going to talk about a few of the more common issues I see with these structures. First one here, the most common I come across, brush and trees that grow on these structures. We want to eliminate them and, uh, encourage proper vegetation on these. If these trees get out of hand and get too big, they can lead to a lot of problems down the road, so those are just a couple of examples of before-and-after shots of, uh, some of the tree removal projects I've been a part of here. This next one looks a little more serious, this, uh, wave or shoreline erosion. This is due to constant wave action, and it can be due to many other things as well, such as livestock, overgrazing, uh, things like that. But in this case, uh, the shoreline has eroded probably about fifteen feet away from where it should be and has left about a five- or four-foot, um, cliff, basically, right along the shoreline. So, we're kind of currently working on a few projects to repair these right now.
We're two or set.
Oh, okay.
We're going to have to catch you on it.
That's fine. I just appreciate you letting me present some of this information, so.
All right.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Can we get that announced so we can follow up, or do you plan to have him come back?
Do you want to come back up to finish anything, or?
Well, if you want more information, I basically just wanted to kind of present this information, uh, the Board of Supervisor or sponsors for this, and try and keep touch pace with this. So, if you want more information, I can leave contact information.
Let's just let him finish.
Okay, well, I'll have you finish just after this real quick set time here.
Okay, all right. Glenn, item nine, Public Hearing and Authorized Chairman to Sign Second Amendment to Tower Lease Agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS.
Glenn Setteby, Woodbury County Communications, representing Starcom Executive Board. AT&amp;T desires to amend the current lease on a tower site near Homer, Nebraska, that's property of Woodbury County. Starcom worked with Mr. Whitman and AT&amp;T for this amendment. The Executive Board recommends to the, to this board to, uh, proceed with the approval of the lease amendment. It has been in front of Dakota County Law Enforcement Center. We subleased the property that the tower sits on, they've approved it, so we've made every step that we needed to take except for this public hearing and approval.
All right.
Are we on a public hearing, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, we're now in a public hearing.
Hearing on, Mr. Chair, I'll move to the public hearing.
I'll second that. All right. Motion by Taylor, second by Radic, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero.
I'll move to authorize the chairman to sign the second amendment to a tower lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS.
I'll second that. So, motion by Taylor, second by Radic, any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you, passes four to zero. Sorry about that, Ben.
That's okay. I must at least find it interesting for having you back up.
Yeah.
It won't take too much longer, I just kind of wanted to show a few more things here. During the spring, we had all this flooding, um, and occasionally these structures get plugged and obstructed, so this is a case, uh, it's actually west of Anthan and includes one of these county roads. The water level raised about eight to ten feet above where it normally is, and we were worried that, uh, damaging this road, so the Secondary Road Department, I think out of Correctionville, came in, uh, fixed this issue. But that's, these three are just kind of a few of the, the problems I face and, um, we can try and work on. We expect this kind of thing every year, we kind of plan for it. Majority of these structures, like I said, there's four hundred and eighty structures scattered throughout the county, uh, are in good shape and continue to provide benefits around the county. But as these get older, like I said, a lot of them were built beginning in the late forties, uh, maintenance is continuing to be even more critical, uh, and so we, you know, take into account their design life is fifty years, so we are faced with a few decisions on what to do going forward and some of those decisions we have to make, so. Basically, that's kind of my presentation, just to kind of inform you as sponsors, uh, that we have always been grateful of the relationship we've had with the County Board of Supervisors and, uh, hope that it continues in, uh, being able to maintain these structures, so. Uh, like I said, if you have any questions, you can always contact me or, uh, feel free to ask me now, I guess, but I appreciate the, the time you've given me.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Really interesting. So, you say maintaining these structures become more critical and they're reaching their life expectancy. What do you need in terms of, as you look and you say, you know, this is on its last legs?
Yeah.
Almost put out the pasture, or whatever the best metaphor for that is.
Right.
What kind of long-term plans do you foresee are about to be underwater?
About to be underwater, that's a good one, yeah. And there's a lot of different situations out there, a lot of them, um, they're kind of designed as silkful, too, so, you know, there's just going to be kind of on a case-by-case basis, but we're basically kind of looking at, you know, whether we want to rehabilitate these and spend the money or, you know, finish off their fifty-year life, and then, like, we don't have a lot of the answers right now, so I think what it's going to have to come down to is, you know, a joint discussion with landowners, county board supervisors, the district, on kind of what we want to do with some of these that exceed their life and have kind of fulfilled their, their duties, so, uh, that's something going forward I think we're going to have to address, uh, in the long run here, so.
I wouldn't be afraid to come to us or to start thinking in terms of...
Yeah.
Instead of being reactive, I, we lately have tried to look longer than our nose in terms of...
Yeah.
You know, what's the five, ten, twenty-five-year plan?
Sure.
So, I know that probably requires resources, but I think that's going to be a discussion I think, uh, speaking with the Board, we'd welcome, you know, having that conversation rather than just, you know, getting to where these start to fail and we have to do some sort of...
Act quick. Right, that's a good point. That's something, we can always set up something with, uh, you know, I've worked through county or, uh, district board of directors, too, so there's lots of discussion, uh, between everyone that I think needs to happen here, too, so maybe sometime we kind of welcome that discussion also, so.
You mentioned there was, was it eleven critical?
They're considered high-hazard dams.
High hazard.
Yep, and those are, um, designated that because they're in a populated area and have a risk of damaging property. Like in Bacon Creek, there's five high-hazard dams that we monitor more closely, and also the Iowa Department of Natural Resources is also involved with monitoring those, like, once every two years, so. Yeah, those are a little more critical and we pay a little close attention to those, too, so. Any other questions?
All right, looks like...
Thank you very much.
Good to go, thank you, Ben.
Love you.
Yeah. All right, moving on to item eleven. Uh, approval to purchase fire detection system for climbing hill facility in the amount of fifty-seven hundred twenty-five dollars.
This was put in the capital improvement budget for last year, it was received but not approved. We got a quote for Midwest Alarm to make the improvements necessary, uh, some of this fire equipment, or fire alarm system dates back thirty-plus years. And we switched over to Midwest for monitoring our alarms when the comm center got out of the business, and, um, these are some recommendations we have to, uh, replace some sensors and add some new sensors to the, to the system. Total of fifty... Five thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars. Kenny's looked at it, and he's okay with it, and Josh has looked at it. There was, uh, some contract language that he wanted changed before the chairman signed it. In the process of that happening, uh, the unit price and the, um, total on the Excel spreadsheet on the first page dropped off, and I have copies of that original first page with the quantities and the price, if anybody wants to see that. It has been corrected, but the copy that is upstairs for the chairman to sign.
I guess, my question is, why is it necessarily needed?
Well, I mean, it's a big building, and some of the sensors that are there are really old. They've reached the end of their useful life, they probably should have been replaced after ten years. I don't know what's the useful life is most to them on these, on those sensors.
Um, I, I would agree with Gary, if, uh, we continue to do operations out of this facility, that we should, uh, upgrade the safety on these. Again, he, he mentioned that, uh, when the comm center, uh, starts discontinued monitoring, um, buildings, um, it put us all pretty much in the, in the same, uh, game of trying to find a new vendor or a new way of, uh, receiving those alarms or monitoring those alarms, and so that played into it as well.
Hey, we have, you know, the county owns quite a bit of assets inside that building, there's, there's a lot of equipment there, and there's crews that stay there. You know, they could be in their bunk room and have a fire going on on the other end of the building and wouldn't even know it because the building's that large, so.
There's two overnight on a typical night.
Yep.
I'll move it.
I'll second. So, this is to notify people in the building, or is this for, is it just a comprehensive?
It both notifies any occupants that are in the building at the time the alarm goes off, but it also notifies Midwest Alarm. And then we have set instructions with them for, uh, depending on the alarm, whether they call a responsible party or whether they dispatch fire and law enforcement.
Are the, uh, devices all replacing old devices? Are you adding more devices than used to be there?
Both. We're adding some new devices. We've got, uh, like in the, in the sleeping quarters, we're going to double that, we're going to, uh, put carbon oxide and propane detection in the boiler room where the furnace is at, which right now we don't have. We're going to put, uh, basically double the detectors that are in the gymnasium that we now use as a garage because there's motor vehicles in there and other equipment, so we're going to go from two in there to four because there's two different levels of the ceiling. There's a ceiling, the stage level, and then there's a ceiling level in the gym. This will also replace the detectors that are in the garage where the, uh, on-duty trucks are at as well, so.
This is coming out of CIP, is that right?
Yes, he had six thousand there, so it's actually less than what he originally had.
So, we borrowed appropriately for all the projects in the CIP, or not?
We borrowed, today approved this year, we borrowed in May to be paid starting in fiscal year twenty-one. So, we haven't borrowed money, but we will be borrowing money, we always do in May.
Where are we at in, as far as percentage of the CIP that we've used or amount of it?
There's really not any amount.
Okay.
It's kind of wide open, that's why it's kind of a moving target as we go along. Yes, they did have projects estimated, or we've had new ones come up, and these others have to come before the Board, so we keep a running book with Kenny here, because all the things are going through him now, so we keep an accurate total, whatever department gets it, so we know exactly what we got to borrow from May.
All right, any other discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero, thank you. All right, moving on to Kenny here in item twelve A, approve Trosper Hoyt Juvenile Detention Kitchen Project CIP funding in the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cents.
Uh, the Board has already approved the Trosper Hoyt Juvenile Detention Kitchen Project. Uh, this agenda item addresses, uh, the expenditures for that project and where the CIP funds come from. Uh, the project total is estimated to be one hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. Uh, that's the amount that I am requesting, that includes a five percent project contingency of eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars and seventy-nine cents. Uh, the funds utilized would be, uh, from the two thousand nineteen CIP Trosper Hoyt, uh, that would be one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and the LEC ninety-one oh-two dash nineteen, uh, CIP at seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cents.
Yes, we borrow the money, we don't expend, expend the contingency and it just falls back.
Yes.
We revert the funds. Days in, three sixty. And they should know by then if they are using the contingency, start the project now.
I'll move to approve the Trosper Hoyt Juvenile Detention Kitchen Project CIP funding in the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any other questions or discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero. Uh, moving on to B, received the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Justice Center Financial Advisor request for proposal submissions.
Uh, in August of two thousand nineteen, uh, the Board approved a request, uh, to seek, um, a request for proposals for a financial advisor, uh, for a law enforcement center, possible project in the future. Uh, we opened those, uh, RFPs that were received today. Uh, there were four of those. Um, we're asking the Boards to receive those this evening. Uh, the four were, uh, as follows, DA Davidson, Des Moines, Iowa, McLeanian Company of Mission, Kansas, Piper Jaffrey of Des Moines, Iowa, and Hilltop Securities of St. Louis, Missouri, and I'll invite Larry Goldberg up to say a few words. We're not asking you to, uh, approve one of the RFPs tonight. We're going to need some further examination to, uh, delve into those, and, um, they're a little bit lengthy, so there's quite a bit of information in quite a few of them and variances. Larry?
Good evening, Supervisors. We've received four of these, as Kenny outlined. Frankly, I've worked with all four, and they all represent, uh, excellent services and tons of experience, so what I propose, starting tomorrow morning, is I'm going to work with, Dennis Butler, the county's financial, uh, director, to sort of tease these apart, compare them, and come back in front of you next Tuesday with a recommendation for a course of action. Those recommendations may include selecting one outright, it may include suggesting that we interview one or more of them to clarify their proposals. We have at least one that's a little muddled in terms of, of their fees, so some of these may need clarifications. I'm particularly concerned that they have Iowa experience with justice and detention centers along these lines for purposes of knowledge and ratings and anyhow, so hopefully next week we'll be able to make a recommendation to the Board that you can act on, or if not the week thereafter. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I'll move to receive. I'll sec, second that. Uh, motion by Hung, second by Radig. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Quick question.
Sure.
So on the, the RFP selection, because the services were not bound by the lawyers' cost, are they?
Typically, the bids are probably about the same on that, aren't they, now?
Correct. We can pick the one that we feel best meets the needs for the county. I mean, yeah, cost would be a factor in that, but it's not the loan factor.
Irregardless.
All right, so that means no 12C. Moving on to 13A. Secondary Roads Award Bid for Project Number LFM D50 Grading for Paving Project on 250th Street to Mather Construction for $2,31,975.53. That was the low bid, right?
It was the low bid.
I will move that.
And there were, there were no mathematical mistakes in this.
Second. Motion by Radic, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion on that? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? And that passes four to zero. Moving on to item B. Received bids for PCC patching and return them to the county engineer for review and recommendation.
We had one bidder. This is an annual PCC patching we do around the county. There are a number of, usually it's about the same amount of roads in the Winnebago's entrance road. This year, the contractors are a little bit busy and behind because of the wet weather. So we were pretty fortunate to get one. This bid is from Ten Point Construction out of Dennison. They do have a properly assigned bid bond.
Just didn't have the backup material what the estimate was on this one.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I actually printed some out to bring you.
My system's not yours. Oh. So the estimate for the record there was $92,310, which is one bid we might be.
Oh.
All right. You may have seen it there.
No, I have not. Their bid is $84,239. $84,239.
What was the name of that again?
Ten Point Construction of Dennison.
All right. I'll move to receive that first.
Second.
Motion by Radic, second by Young. Any discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes four to zero. Or anyone opposed, I guess I should ask first. Passes four to zero. I will go ahead and move to award that Ten Point Construction for $84,000.
Second.
Or added, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Thank you. I was just going to add to Ben's presentation that we do inspection on the high-hazard dams every two years. Our office does, as required by the DLR, we file those reports. We also send in given resources for their insurance.
I guess I got a question. On the, on the high-hazard dams, does that change anybody's insurance rates for homeowners' insurance? Or is, I mean, are they not automatically considered in a flood zone if the?
You know, I guess, I've been in the office, there have been contacted by landowner downstream of that. I think as long as they're inspected and kept in, you know, good working order, because there's repairs to be done on them, animal holes, things like that, that can cause a hazard to the urban dams. But the insurance question, I'm just not sure on that, Rocky.
Yeah, I don't know any of the insurance part of that either.
Is anybody necessarily nervous that they live on, below one of these? What?
You know, back in when we had some of the March flooding, there was a real problem with some of these dams because they weren't allowed to flow through and the overflow was fucking imminent, but we did not really have a problem. We were contacted by one landowner to come check it, but it seemed to be okay after we inspected the dam. And mainly due to the frozen soil. Good question. Could probably find out for you.
Well, I, I, just curiosity thing.
Yeah. Well, I would think whoever writes the insurance would have that somehow listed in their homeowners' insurance that there is a hazard below them.
Curious.
Majority of them that we inspect, we are required to put what's below them. And I can only think of one place down in Danbury where there is a farm down below.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ben. All right, moving on to item 14. Approval to provide wellness screenings and continued quarterly individual health coaching to eligible Woodbury County employees.
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director. I'm here to ask for funding to provide the wellness screenings and also the individual quarterly coaching for our eligible employees. This year, we'll be doing four screenings, the wellness blood profile, PCA, TSH, and AC1. And we've, we've provided this program since 2014, and I think we're taking good steps to make it more convenient for employees to participate as well as to fit their needs. Any questions?
This is already figured in your budget, isn't it?
It comes out of the health fund.
Yeah. I'll move it. Second. Motion by Radic, second by Young. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 15. From our auditor. Approved purchase of five scanners for election office out of FY20 CIP.
Before I get started, I wanted to take this opportunity to welcome my sister Janet Low from, all the way from St. Louis. She recently retired and on her bucket list for 23 years has been to be an attendant at a Woodbury County Board of Supervisors meeting. She has checked that off, so.
I wish I would have known. I would have been more theatrical. Maybe, maybe prepared some jokes or something, you know.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
The item that you have before you is a result of why there are a couple more of them that were here tonight, is that the process that Dennis and I and building services agreed to for our CIP is that you actually receive those during the budget process, but now there's a formal approval process that they have to come before you to get the final approval before they actually expend the funds. And what you have from our department is, and Dennis asked this today, we hope this is the last for election equipment this year, but these are for scanners that need to be updated. They also are compatible with the new software that we are converting to, and so that's why this item is before you.
Move to approve the purchase out of FY20 CIP.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion on the item? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Anyone got Ben's cell number? He left the contract here on the, up here.
I got it.
All right, you want to text them if it's up here. Moving on to item 16. From Board Administration. Dennis Butler setting a date for public hearing in 2019 amendment to the Grill Woodbury County Urban Renewal Area and Plan.
Okay, that's one of the requirements to amend. Our plan is to have a public hearing. Today, you'll be setting a date as October 22 at 4:45 PM. After this set, then we have to go through a couple of processes where we have to talk to each city clerk or, in the case of the city, possibly Jeff Hanson of the Community Development about coming within their two-mile limit. Because the way it's proposed, we are doing roads right up to the city limits, but because we're using TIF revenues, we have to have a consultation with the cities, which I don't see any problem there because basically you're getting roads right up to their city limits new and, or revised. And also, we got to meet on October 3 at 2:00. We're going to call the city or all the school districts together, have a consultation with them as required by law, and they have an opportunity to file protests or anything, make objections to the project, in which case I do not see anybody objecting to something where their buses go over. But they have to have the opportunity. So that's kind of our criteria as we're setting the date today. Probably next week, we'll try to meet with the cities. October 3, we'll meet with the school districts. And then October 22, we'll have the hearing and pass the amendment to the plan to continue on with our road project.
All right. Good first. Another baby step in the process, anyway.
Yep. Has to be published once in a paper of general circulation, not more than four days prior and not, not more than 20 days prior or less than four days. So we'll handle that.
So what are you proposing as action for the date?
Action, setting the date of October 22. We do have a resolution for the chair to be authorized to sign and the auditor as part of the process. Now set the date October 22 at 4:45 PM.
4:45.
You're looking for a motion?
Yes.
I'd move to set the date of the public hearing. Any question at 4:45 PM on October 22?
All right, I will second that. Some motion by Taylor, second by Radic. All right, any discussion on it? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Item 17. Report on committee meetings.
Looks like we're going to have our joint city, county meetings on the Sergeant Bluff and the City of Sioux City during the next two days, lunch hour, to see if we can help to lower that volume threshold perhaps, as well as partners with upcoming law enforcement centers. And so I'll report back. That's all there.
Just you or both of you?
Me, Kenny, Larry, Keith. Anybody else in? Josh?
Just had a health and wellness committee meeting today. Melissa's doing a good job with that. We did have some forecasted increases for just general costs, but we've made up for that with changing of the life insurance company. Basically, no change in actual benefits, but saved $150,000 a year. So good work there.
All right, do you have any?
I got nothing.
Just had her out in the county meeting and I do plan to get food again like we had at the next one. I was kind of amazed there. We ended up with only four pieces of chicken and four pieces of pizza left by the end, so.
It was good.
Yeah.
No chips?
No chips. Those are still secretly.
Only eat other people's chips. They have to bring the chips.
All right, citizen concerns. Taylor, anything about North Carolina football or? No? Okay. All right. Board concerns. All right. I have nothing either. We're adjourned. Oh, I did have the library board resignation.